So again, this is a special emergency meeting called yesterday for the meeting to ensue this morning. We are recording this and this meeting will also be live streamed on Facebook. So for those of you who have an opportunity to watch, we welcome you as well. We'll follow our usual procedure with a brief roll call and then we'll do a couple of preliminaries and get right into the essence of the meeting today. So, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Marshburn.
Present.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Bellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
And Councilmember Vance.
Here.
And I apologize, Ms. Behringer, it should be Mayor Pro-
No problem.
Okay, thank you. If you will, please, let's stand and if you would, join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Even though it's not listed on our agenda, for our regular meetings, we always have an invocation and in times and circumstances like we're living in now, I think it's most appropriate to have an invocation and so I'm going to call on Councilmember and Reverend Elmo Vance to lead us in that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Spirit of God, we come to you again as humbly as we know how to give you the recognition that you so are entitled to. We ask that you guide our minds to focus on those things that'll be pleasing in your sight, to keep us in a frame of mind to understand that this is a situation in which will be one that we will work through. God, give us the patience with each other, give us the understanding with each other. We ask that you take care of this community, guide this community, and allow them not to panic or to fret, but to understand that all things will come to good if we just stay focused on what we are all about and listen to what is necessary in order to prevent things from happening. We thank you, Father, for what you've done and how you continue to bless and to keep us, how to strengthen us and allow us to work in harmony. We thank you for all those who are out there on the front lines, our police, our EMS, our fire departments, who are going into the midst to help those who are in need. We thank you, God, for what you've done and what you continue to do, and it's in your most precious Son, Jesus Christ, name I pray, we say, "Amen."
Amen. Thank you, thank you so much, Councilmember Vance. Our reason for being here today and stated purpose is to review recent information and directives from the governor's office related to COVID-19, commonly known as the coronavirus, and to discuss further processes, procedures, and actions which the council deems appropriate to protect our citizens and to enforce requirements consistent with the governor's declaration of a state of emergency. As we begin today, I would be remiss, I believe, if I did not recognize and commend the tireless efforts of our town manager and his staff for their work and perseverance over these past several days. I have personally witnessed their efforts on our behalf through the many meetings, the call-in conferences, emails, texts, sent and received, and many other items that I probably haven't thought of. I know they have spent long hours because I was with them on a recent meeting that I suppose I initiated that lasted at least until 6:30 PM on a day that they had been working for many hours already. I know they were here at Town Hall yesterday, Saturday, still working on many of the issues that we will discuss here this morning. And even as late as last evening, just as the town manager had arrived at his home after he had been here, and I've forgotten the time, Rodney, I think it was between 9:30 and 10 o'clock, he and I were on the phone, talking and preparing for this meeting this morning. So, I would say to all of you, I think they deserve our great respect and gratitude. The way we'll proceed this morning is I'm going to ask the town manager to do an overview, review for our council members in regards to items that have been discussed and items of action that have already been taken as we have been preparing and are still preparing for issues that change almost daily. And what we'll do after his presentation, we'll give council members an opportunity to ask questions or make comments, and then after that, we'll probably have different council members speak to the issue at hand, the comments they want to share and ideas they want to share. I don't expect we will take any formal action today. Our regular meeting this coming Tuesday will take place as scheduled. So with that being said, unless a council member has a quick conversation they need to make, I'm going to call on the town manager to present us with information.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll go through kind of a list of things that the staff has been doing, may not be exactly in order, I'll try to keep it somewhat in order, but there's so many things going on at one time that I don't have it like in chronological order. But I think I'll give you the gist of what's been going on. So earlier this week and I think even last week, late last week, we have been in contact with Wake County EOC, their Emergency Operations Center, they've been having pretty much daily calls with emergency personnel and management teams throughout Wake County, kind of giving a briefing. That is common practice, especially during storms. We all kind of get together and talk about pending crisis and how we might respond and what resources we might need. So we've been doing that. Out of that call, there was a talk about events early on, as early this week, I can't remember if that call was a Monday or Tuesday call, but at that time, it was requested that all the local governments put together a list of events, especially large events that we might be having, so we could start talking about those and how they might be handled. So we asked staff, I asked staff, department heads to put that list together and compile it. At that time, Wake County Public Health said they would provide some guidance if we needed, but to give them 10 days leeway to do that. We also started distributing information out, especially to staff, about the coronavirus and that there would be some planning being done and that, you know, we're taking a lot of direction from Wake Public Health and some of the things we're hearing at the managers' meeting. We had the Wake County managers' meeting on Wednesday and we shared a lot of information with each other. There was someone from Human Services there, Wake County Human Services, because the public health person, as you can imagine, was tied up, but we shared information there and the county manager shared some of the things they were thinking about doing. And we kind of all went around the room and talked about the possibility of some things that we might want to put in place. So following that, had a department head meeting the next day, which I think was Thursday, and went through a whole list of things with department heads about the crisis and pandemic and what things we might be looking at as far as event cancellations, what it meant for employees coming to work, those type of things. Went around the room and just kind of got any ideas or concerns. You know, we talked about things like teleworking, because obviously, especially now that schools have been closed, a directive to close all schools, there's going to be some employees that may need to work from home and may not have, you know, childcare options, so some will have the ability to work from home, some may not. So we talked about how we would handle those type of situations and leave situations. And so I put together, along with the management team, some directives for internal operations as it relates to use of leave, teleworking, and then we also put in some travel restrictions, because one of the things we had seen from the CDC information, and a lot of, we talked about it as a managers' group, is the elimination of some travel, especially to conferences where there might be large groups, and then also on airplanes or tightly confined spaces and those type of things. So we started to look at those type of policies and we have something in place now that's been sent to all employees so they can make decisions about work schedules tomorrow. In addition to that, we're talking about continuity of operations and how we're going to do business here. So we're working with our IT department on how we can accommodate teleworking or working off-location, those type of things. I've had various meetings with the mayor and various council members in person and on phone, just talking about our various policies and decisions that need to be made. One of the key decisions that was made was the cancellation of events that included town events that we were sponsoring, also included private events that were going to be held at our facilities, including athletics and shows at the auditorium. It included discussing meetings, so it could be these meetings or any other type of business meetings, so we talked about those things and how we would handle that situation and consulted with council and the mayor about the list of cancellations and looking at those and made the call on Friday, as we discussed it, to officially cancel a lot of the town programming and some of the private programming. So we did that. And a lot of that was in response to some of the directives we had. At the time, they were not directives, they were guidance, so we followed some of that. And also got a list of travel, I think I may have said that. Some of the other things we've been trying to do is provide sanitizing stations through our facilities, that's been very difficult because the supplies are low, so we have had some installed in some facilities and we have some out here today and had some at the G-PAC, but now that it's closed, that might not be as urgent. But trying to do those type of things that will help with safety and the spread of, spread of the virus. We're getting extra cleanings in some facilities that may still be in use, although it may be less than 100 people, we still feel like with the various events that are still going to go on, we may need some extra cleaning there. And we just continue to brainstorm different things that we might be able to do. We still brainstorm some things that we might be willing to do from a public side, but it's things that haven't been vetted yet, so we're, you know, still looking at all the different options and possibilities. And I'll just check with the two assistants to see if I missed out anything that was important that might need to talk about.
One thing that we did do early last week was the planning department did convert all of their pre-development meetings to being remote-based, either by teleconference or video conference. That is one of the times where we have the most likelihood of getting a large number of visitors together with a large number of staff, so they proactively changed the format of those meetings early last week. So that has lessened the number of visitors that have to come here. Those are required meetings, so development can't move forward through our process without them, so we're trying to allow a way for developers and their, anybody working on their teams to be able to continue moving their work through, even though we're having to take a different type of work plan.
Yeah, one thing I didn't mention was pretty big is our communications department has been participating in joint communication efforts with communication officials in Wake County and Durham and just trying to have a consistent message. And we started, like I said, putting our information, but we actually built a town of Garner coronavirus COVID-19 webpage and we were posting information on there and we put some of the CDC public health information, guidance information. We also have been posting, we posted what our plan was for closings and cancellations of events. So that's kind of going to be our official, our official spot for getting information out to the public as well as our ability to blast it out through our social media channels. So with that, there might be some other things that I might mention as we go, but that's pretty much a briefing of what we've done this week.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Manager. Just before I call on council members for questions or comments, I do want to, I'm not sure if you mentioned this, but I think everybody at this day knows that Wake County declared a state of emergency effective March 13, signed by their chairman, Gregory Ford. I have a copy of that here. But I wanted to read to you just one little segment of that to remind us of how we are involved. It says, "Now therefore pursuant to the authority contained in Article 1A of North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter 166A, Article 36A of North Carolina General Statutes," I'm not going to cite all of those, "that the Wake County Code of Ordinance, Greg Ford, Chairman of the Wake County Board of Commissioners, does hereby proclaim that a state of emergency exists within the county of Wake and by request of the mayors or their appointed representatives, and he names all of the municipalities in Wake County, and Garner is one of those. I wanted this body to know that we, like all the others, have concurred with that and understand that it has effect within the corporate limits of each one of these municipalities. So that within itself carries some issues and responsibilities. Okay, having said that, I would say to council members that it's my intent to give everyone here an opportunity to ask questions. We don't want to have anyone or two persons dominate, so if I call on you and you're not ready yet, we can easily defer to a fellow council member and we'll get through each person here to give you an opportunity to question, to make comments. I didn't tell her in advance, but I will begin with the Mayor Pro Tem, Ms. Behringer, if you have any questions or if you need some time to-
No, I just, I don't have any questions. I'm pleased to hear all of the work that's been done. I know that's a lot of, a lot of time spent that wasn't planned into the week initially and I think it's, it's time well spent and the job has been done well. I would just like to comment, as we look at this whole scenario and what we're going to do about or not do about protecting our citizens, we look at the history, epidemics are not, they are historical, we have them. Sadly, we don't like it, but it's not something that has just suddenly come out of nowhere from outer space. We do, we have had epidemics, we had a flu epidemic in 1918. There were no antibiotics back then, which is why more people died than would have had there been antibiotics. That was a terrible pandemic, but we did not have antibiotics then. 1948, there was the polio epidemic. It peaked in 1948, it actually lasted about eight years. Hospitals will build all over the country in record time to take care of that and the vaccine was not perfected until 1954. That was horrendous. In 1968, the Hong Kong flu became a pandemic. In 2011, I believe it was, H1N1 was almost considered to be an epidemic. So I'm saying that we need to be cautious, we need to do everything we can, but we need to look at this historically and understand that we have been through terrible issues like this before and we will survive this one, we will make it through it, and we will do the very best we can to protect the people that we are, we love and are responsible for.
Thank you, and I should mention to council members that if you spend much of your time asking questions, you certainly will have an opportunity to make general comments and we'll have further discussion. So at that point, I'm going to call, at this point, I'm going to call on Mr. Singleton for any questions he may have. Town Manager.
Questions. I want to thank the staff, their work, I appreciate the employee guidance that we got from y'all, Rodney. I appreciate, I know you asked us about, one of the concerns was about employee leave. You had employees who didn't have leave or didn't have vacation and this may be not only a week or two weeks, I appreciate you, you know, the 40 hours and also the last night, that it may increase, because as you touched on, you got employees who may have children they have to stay home with, and when those schools close for at least two weeks, and it may be longer, so that may, you know, the 40 hours may become 80 hours or more, we don't know. So I appreciate you, you know, looking at that, because I think that was important to all of us. I got a few questions, specific questions, asking about operations within the staff and departments. John touched on one about development services, that you're doing everything in a, through a video conference, because I was going to ask, if one or two members in there, whether it be planning or inspections or engineering, tested positive, would you shut the whole department down because they all work together? So that's the question, would you shut the department down? I'm assuming that you would. I don't know.
Well, I think, I think we'd have to also understand, there's going to be some guidance given out about mandated services such as building inspections, so before we could give a final answer on that, we're going to have to get the guidance that's going to be, I think there's a meeting tomorrow to work on the guidance that will be given from the state to figure out what type of leeway we will have on mandatory services, and that would have to factor a little bit in, you know, otherwise I think it would just be a yes, but we do have to factor in a few things like mandated services and do we have enough people that have not been in the building or close proximity to others that could still maintain some of the mandated services.
That gets me to the first question I had tonight, excuse me today, was if one of the managers, Rodney or John or Matt, who's been interacting with all these department heads, test positive, that we shut down most of Town Hall? I'm assuming that you would, I don't know.
Well, I think in that case, we would explain the situation to the public health officials and let them give us guidance on how much quarantine, how much we would, had need to dismiss people, because I'm not the authority on that, so I would rely on the medical public health officials to give us guidance.
Okay. Finance Department, the people that come in, they interact with the public a lot, people paying bills. I found that Raleigh has come out and said they would not be cutting water off at Penguins for Mist. So if we had to close down or close that department, so they, one or two of the people in finance, and they worked closely together too, and you had to close that department just per se. Well, I know we have a drop box of people to make bills, we can make all that available online and also you can put signs on the door, I mean, we can do all that, because that's, again, the two most public interaction are there and community services when people come in, so.
Correct, yeah, and we talked about the possibility of having a bill paid through the box, but there's a, small, but there's a population that, you know, they like to come up to the window-
But if they like to pay and that's the way they pay and-
Directly, so.
And they may not be able to go to Raleigh or some other site-
Or online, or those type of things.
Yeah, they may not do online, exactly. And most of those are an older population, more senior population.
One of the good things, and I'm not saying it's 100% avoidable, but we do have a glass barrier between our payment clerks and the window, so that does help with the spread of the particulate matter, so.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Let me ask this one quick, while we got police and fire, let me ask this, I'm sure I want to ask this. One of your members tests positive, you got fire, rescue, first responder, police, y'all interact, y'all interact with the public every day, as much or more than anybody. If something happens, one of your officers is tested positive, what's the plan? The officer, of course, wouldn't come to work, but I mean, what would you do with other people that are on the same shift? Just curious.
Can you, can you come up to the-
Yeah.
Either.
Chief, Ben, Jeff.
Either one.
I ask this because I think people know, because one, they want the police to be out there, and one, they want fire, rescue, and first responders to be out there, and they just want to know, that's why I ask.
Sir, I think there's two different situations that might occur. One would be that we don't have symptoms, that don't even know we're exposed until a couple days after. At that point, we have multiple exposures, so we have that issue. There's other issues where we know we have at least, at least one resident or two residents inside the seat limits of Garner that have a CAD status, basically saying that they are, to use universal precautions, because those potentially be carrying the virus. So with those, that's a known exposure, so we'd handle that differently. Certainly what we're trying to do is, if we have an exposure, we're going to, again, contact the town manager and work through the CDC and those things. We're going to quarantine those officers that have that exposure, and then we have other officers that we're working on keeping at home and doing work at home, so that we have reserve officers to come in and take their place if we need to.
Thank you, that's good to hear.
And I promise, Ms. Singleton, I'll come back to him, but for sake of time equity here-
Mr. Penny asked a question about-
Oh, excuse me, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry.
I'll go sit down.
No, please, come.
So to address some of the same concerns that you have with Garner Police Department, chief pull is identified, some type of mutual aid agreements, if, say, a mass shift of virus was exposed, we could pull from other departments to supplement those personnel. As far as if we're exposed, really, we're not going to know about it until, we're probably going home the next day and then it'll actually be related to the Health Department, then in Web EOC, and then we'll be contacted. So by that time, we're probably already exposed, or family, things like that. If it was a known situation, we have three possible options for where we would send our personnel for quarantine 14 days, and that would likely be a whole shift or a station. So we're identifying minimum staffing, kind of reevaluating that, how do we operate with lesser numbers if that were to be a possibility? But then also, two, how we handle quarantine, how we handle exposure, a known exposure versus a exposure that we find out about later on.
And we're participating in mutual aid also, other communities, they're helping us, we're helping them.
Yeah, absolutely, and then, so that's actually something that our administration has actually been really proactive in, just if it comes up, how we're going to handle that kind of thing. And I think that's handled amongst the fire chiefs of the county.
Good, thanks, sir.
And I guess from law enforcement and fire suppression, we continually and regularly participate in mutual aid and have agreements, but that state of emergency opens up a whole level, a whole nother level of mutual aid through the state and other resources, so we can come on there.
I would say on both points, to PD, EMS, and fire, our dispatch center at the guidance of Wake County EMS and our emergency medical director, there's a lot of protocols that they're following to try to eliminate us from exposure, so.
I have a question related, because it's actually a very-
Okay, we'll go to the chairman.
Yeah, it's related to Gray's question on capacity, because in this particular scenario, you have a couple of different scenarios. You have a scenario where Garner and Wake County may be one of the initial sites of community spread within a department. You have a second scenario where Garner may be the fifth or sixth municipality to have community spread. You also have the entire state facing a very similar situation. So we end up in a situation where if an officer becomes known, particularly police, I think you all congregate in sort of larger groups for meetings, we end up in a situation where we have a significant portion of our local police department may face quarantine upwards of 20 to 25% of our department, and there may or may not be other officers or capacity available if we are the fifth municipality in Wake County, because again, this is a statewide issue. And so the question is, what is a contingency plan when we're down 20 to 25% of our officers because they're in quarantine and there is not adequate support from other local governments who may be experiencing exactly what we're experiencing?
So I think that comes into, what does our manpower look like? So we have, what I was talking about earlier, is we're going to have specific departments, like our school resource officers and different officers, sworn officers, at different levels of the organization, that are not going to be at work and not going to be exposed, not going to be the first responder. So we have enough people, if we have 25% of our department exposed and in quarantine, we have enough people to pull from inside internally to run those first responder calls to get us through that 14-day quarantine period, whatever we need.
Thank you.
Can I make one comment? As many of you know, I work with the Police Chiefs Association. Mutual aid is not limited to Wake County. Mutual aid can extend to any other police department in the state, and use of mutual aid has been relaxed to the point that all it takes is a phone call. Police departments extended mutual aid to many other police departments in recent storms and floods. So don't, don't think that our police department is limited to assistance from other Wake County PDs.
Understood. As all know, that it's potentially a statewide issue.
Right.
And smaller municipalities have even less capacity to withstand an occurrence in their counties, so, but thank you.
Okay, keeping with the sequence, I'm going to recognize Councilmember Vance, if he has questions in regards to the town manager's presentation or things related.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, I do, and I would just like to say to the police department and to the fire department, for their services, they're really appreciated, and you have my support in your endeavors. And to the staff, that was, in my opinion, a very good brief in the actions that are currently going on within Wake County and doing these unprecedented times, and just keeping the panic level low and allowing this process to take place. No one has the exact answer as to what to be done, but if we not panic and be the leaders that we need to be and set an example and get information out there, I friend believe that we will move forward confidently, knowing that this too will be like the other situations we've had in the past. And the question I have is, in reference-
we've had in the past. And the question I have is, in reference to the, the current, I know that before the pandemic hit, that we had a number of priorities that were in place relative to projects and things of that nature. And understanding that now that the staff's attention has changed from those priority projects to focusing pretty much wholly on the, on the, on the pandemic concerns and answering other questions. With that being said, do you foresee high priority projects that were high before the pandemic slipping pretty far? And has there been any thought as to prioritizing those projects coming back online once this begins to settle down?
Yes, I do. It's going to depend a lot on what employee base we have here to do those things. It depends on the urgency. Are there any deadlines? There's some things we've made a priority because they're just our, part of our strategic plan and our goals. But it will not hurt if we let the timeline go a little longer. And so we will look at those critical mission things first and then prioritize those. There's certainly going to be some things that get delayed. So we just ask for your understanding and the public's understanding as we work through those.
Yes, and I ask that.
We have, we have had some discussion with you, the mayor, the council, about meetings and council meetings and those type of things. And, you know, with the budget coming up, you know, that's a priority item. So we're going to try to conduct those meetings following the guidelines the best we can. And if, if things change, then we'll have to make other decisions as, as, as those things happen. But yes, there will be a lot of prioritization, some staff meetings we'll continue to have, starting even tomorrow. We've had some. We're going to have even more and talk about that as we get into our teleworking plan and leave plan.
Okay, thank you. I'm going back and forth. So Mr. Matthews, your next step.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the town management staff for what you're doing. All, all of our EMS services across the board sound like you guys have got a handle on it. I expected nothing less. And I agree with attorney, having served in some of those capacities, mutual aid is far beyond Wake County. So, and, and sadly, this thing has got to this point. I had the opportunity yesterday just to stop by a food store and just get something for dinner last night. I wanted to know if, and to see how the store was wiped out. It was unbelievable. To this day, I cannot understand why people need 50 cases of toilet paper. I ain't figured that one out yet. And while the bottled water is being bought, I'm going to hold on to this because it's going to be very important later and valuable. Yes, I could.
Sell it on eBay later.
Yeah, I could. And some of the things you see on Facebook and it's, you know, I don't play down the importance of the pandemic, first of all, and I don't take it lightly. But, but if, it's this thing, it's got so much out of control, it is unbelievable. And I don't, I'm preaching to the choir here because if you go to any TV station, it's got, whether it's W R L, 11, 17, Fox, or any of the others, that's all that's being talked about. And, and it changes by the hour. Everybody knows what it is, how you get it. And from worldwide, the president's having to deal with it, the governor's having to deal with it, and the county, and we're here at municipality. But, you know, I would encourage people, just use common sense, you know, the word, you know, wash your hands, stay out of public gatherings whenever you can, and just use common sense. Going to Walmart, cleaning out the shelves is not going to make it any better. It reminds me of somebody that mentioned snow. If you mention snow, Lowe's food is going to be emptied out within three hours. So if they want to grow their business, that's a good way to do it. And again, I'm not playing this down by any stretch of imagination. I'm probably one of the older ones on here and nothing to do with the mayor Protem's age. She's probably a lot younger than I am, but we've had these things before. We've moved to them using common sense. I remember when the polio thing came through. Then there was a thing when I was in, just going back a hundred years, when I was in the first, second grade, the red eye thing was going on. Hey, wait.
If you went back a hundred years, you are older than me.
Okay, so I am older. But every two or three years or something, then there was the swine flu that was out a few years ago. I will guarantee you five years from now, there's going to be something else. But fortunately, we've got communications now we didn't have back in those days. We've got prior planning and we learn from these things in prior days. And so when you're having a, a health versus a, versus a, a natural disaster, those are two different items altogether. You know the hurricane's coming, you make your plans, you do what you gotta do. For something like this, it's difficult to make the plans because it can show up anywhere. But again, I'm not playing it down. I think it's good that we can talk like this and use common sense. And I'm sure we're going to talk about religious services a little bit later. So having said that, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll go back to you.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, I appreciate each one of you. I don't have a, an official time clock, but I'm trying to keep everybody sort of, and, and we'll do a, a second cycle of these on the first cycle. So I recognize Councilmember Dellinger for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to echo my fellow council members in their appreciation of all the work that staff and the mayor put in in the past week. It's a lot of information, a lot of changing circumstances very quickly, and it's added to workloads and time. And everyone appreciates all the hard work that's been put in. Turning around these documents and employee plans is no small undertaking. I have a question with regards to the employee guidance here on leave and telework, travel. Has there been, in the governor's declaration on yesterday, there was a mandate to encourage, a mandate to encourage social distancing as a practice. Have we put out guidelines through the town and its departments on proper procedures for incorporating? I know John mentioned planning, it already started proactively doing teleconferencing. Have we distributed social distancing guidelines for staff and departments and especially departments that have sort of different congregating needs?
I would say in general terms, we haven't, like I said, you know, everybody stayed six feet from each other. But I would say in general terms, and then the fact that we cancel a lot of the, the, I guess, possibilities of employees and others to be in close contact because of the events, a lot of the events and programs being canceled. So, and we've, we have sent out flyers and we've posted flyers in the buildings and sent it out through our employee email and social media about the guidelines and social distancing is one of the guidelines. So, yes.
Okay.
But we haven't, I haven't been to every department and said, you need to stay here, you need to stay there, that specifically, but.
I think it'd be wise to be that explicit and have communication with your departments on their particular circumstances of how they hold meetings to make sure that they're keeping space. And just better safe than sorry when it comes to making assumptions about, I guess what Mr. Matthews calls the common sense. In uncommon times, common sense looks a little different. Also in the governor's declaration, there was a ban on meetings of 100 or more. I know there was some conversation last night about church congregations. If you could update on how we've been able to handle that situation.
Yes. And I may let the police, inter-police chief speak on this because he put out guidelines for the police department on how they should handle those type of cases. And we also put together a flyer in English and Spanish that explains the 100, no more than 100, the social gathering guidelines from the governor that we could use and the police can use to pass out. But I'll let him speak directly to some of the directions he gave.
Yes, we have the flyer that we're going to hand out anytime we, we find any of these social gatherings. I think Mr. Singleton said he found one last night at the Catholic church. We went by there, they'd already dismissed, but they were aware of those, those restrictions and said they, that was, they were not going to have any more of those by the time we got there. Our supervisor this morning, Sergeant Anderson, there's folks that have already been around this morning and looked at all the local area churches and none of them are holding services this morning. Apparently a lot of them going online and that kind of thing. So I think, I think we're good with that. If we have any, any folks that, that do that, we'll certainly speak with them and make sure they're aware of the guidelines and the restrictions.
I would, I would just make a brief comment on that. I talked with the pastor of the church that I attend, and obviously they cancel services. I think it's proper to, to again, express appreciation to the faith community. You know, we talk about the separation of church and state in this country, and I believe it's a premise and a principle that is important. And when it comes to times like these, it sometimes is difficult to, to sort through the processes that we're going through now. And my impression is, based on preliminary information, is that the faith community is doing its part in, in recognizing the, the mandate by the governor. And, and I have every reason to believe that they will continue to do that. So that's just my personal observation. Mr. Dellinger, do you have another one? And then after that, I'm going to go to somebody else who will circulate the background.
Related to the mass gatherings, have we reached out to, I know there are a number of civic organizations that have banquet halls and facilities. Optimist Club has one, and there are a lot of times weddings and receptions that get held. Have we proactively reached out to these groups that have banquet spaces that they rent to make sure that they're aware of this situation and, and the, and the governor's ban as, as of yesterday? So.
Yeah, we have not specifically reached out to those groups, but we have distributed information through the chamber. The chamber was gracious enough to allow us to use their, their web blast or email blast or whatever they, they have now and distribute a lot of information out. And a lot of those organizations are chamber members or have members that are part of both organizations. So we feel confident that that information has been distributed to those groups. But, you know, we can make an effort to, you know, if that's the council wish to contact those groups. But we, we think putting information on our website and some of the things we've done and all of the media attention that, for the most part, those groups should be well informed.
You went through, we have done, canceled a lot of town events that are happening in town facilities. Which ones are still going to occur in, in facilities that the town operates?
Well, being the guidance was for groups of 100 or more, there were some, we've, we've canceled all of the town sponsored ones, but there were some rentals. So we looked at the rentals of various facilities, the nature center, the shelter. There might be some others. I can't think of the top of my head. But anyway, if we looked at those and if there were less than 100 people, we allowed those events to go on. We're not scheduling any new events regardless of size. But if they already had something planned that did not, was not in conflict with the, the governor's plan, starting on yesterday, we've canceled all of those events.
And how many events in the nature center do we have scheduled and what type of events are those?
I, I didn't count them. I have a list here. But some of them, the type of events, we have weddings. And I'm, I'm going to talk about the nature center and the shelters. There's weddings, there's birthday parties, there are some smaller, there are some church gatherings.
Baby shower.
Baby showers. So just various, various events.
I would recommend that we really carefully evaluate those types of events. It is documented that this virus is particularly dangerous to seniors. It also may be transmitted by younger people without symptoms. And when you have events that are broadly multi-generational, people are in close quarters for extended periods of time, you have lots of physical contact between family members because there's that familiarity. And then you have people traveling from great distances that are coming together from different places and then dispersing again. I think that reunions and weddings are particularly dangerous opportunities for the transmission of, of the virus. And I would highly recommend we reconsider allowing those events, as unfortunate as that is. I think they pose a, a very significant opportunity for transmission, given the rate of change of circumstances over last week, events into next week and the week after. The sooner people have awareness that they need to cancel these events, the more, less frustration there will be and the more they can make alternate plans. That's my assessment of, and again, the town's responsibility as an entity to be responsible with regards to what we can control in rapidly changing situations. That would be my recommendation in that regard.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger, I'm going to call time on you. I think you're essentially finished. And I do have a couple of questions. Then we'll, we'll recycle around to, to your comments. I think I'd prefer we stick with, with, with questions and we'll have an opportunity to, to get into the issue of what more stringent, if any, guidelines we think our town ought to consider. So I think you're moving a little bit more into that area, but we'll come back to that. So the mayor wants to have an opportunity to ask at least one question. Mr. Town Manager, I, I think it would be helpful if you would comment a little bit on the, the senior center and particularly the Meals on Wheels program. That, that's something that a lot of our senior citizens participate in. It's a social event, et cetera. And I think most of them will, will understand the necessity of, of basically closing down the senior center. But I know we've gotten directions from the Meal on Wheels program, and I know Mr. Singleton and myself participate in that in terms of the, the delivering meals outside the center. But maybe talk a little bit about the, what, grab and go, those kinds of things.
Okay, yes, yes. So as we looked at the list of events and gatherings that are normal for Garner, one of the big ones being the Meals on Wheels at the senior center, we didn't want to just, you know, make a blanket statement that everything was closed and leave it at that. We had to give some consideration of the purpose of those programs. So our staff worked with the Meals on Wheels Association to come up with the plan. And what we've done is we've eliminated the congregant meal, so the gathering of the seniors, knowing that that's a vulnerable population. And then we also recognized that they still have to eat. So there was concern about how they would get their meals. And so what we've done is we're going to continue to be a distribution site for volunteers to come pick up the meals and deliver them. But in addition to that, in working with Meals on Wheels, staff has set up a, a situation where seniors or whoever they send can grab and go, what they're calling grab and go, pick up pre-prepared meals and take those with them. So in light of this, you know, crisis, we still understand that there's some things that still need to go on. People have to eat. We know seniors, they're vulnerable for the disease, but they're also vulnerable for not having adequate resources and necessities. So we felt like keeping that center open in the manner that it's going to be open was the thing to do. Now, we have canceled other senior programming at the senior center, knowing that they're vulnerable population. So.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm back.
A question or follow-up, because when I was there Thursday picking up my meals, I noticed, or I was at finish, I'd come back. Some of the seniors don't have transportation. Some of them take the bus. RTS bus was there. I watched six people get on there. So if there's a request, someone makes a phone call and the call's staff, they're not running the senior center, they say, if someone locally needs a meal delivered, are we going to offer that as a staff? They, you know, the bus isn't running, they can't come up, they're bussing and pick up six people and bring them up there to pick up their meal. Would the staff be willing to offer that to deliver a couple, a couple of these people meals?
Something we'll have to talk about. We haven't talked about that. That, that program is not administered by the town.
I understand.
So it would be something we have to talk about as a staff and work, work with Meals on Wheels and the logistics of doing that.
Something to do because I did yesterday, because our church cooks on the second Saturday of every month, and the church is closed. We didn't even do the homeless dinner yesterday. So I went and me and five people met yesterday. We went and bought a bunch of food, prepared food. None of them, we had to touch some snacks and meat sticks and fruit cups and fresh fruit and delivered 18 bags yesterday to people. So just trying to help people hold over because the people would normally take food too, but we didn't prepare food. So I suppose where his meal is and his, his, Ken and his wife serve also, you go see these people, they expect that, you know, they depend on those meals, not expect. Depend is a more important word to say. So I just mentioned that because there are some people who don't have transportation and take the bus. And if it's something to time, it's not, I saw six people getting on. I'm not talking about 40 or 50 people. Most people do drive up there, but it's, it's, you know, owners are there and there's no one in there. If they may have the time to just go deliver two, three meals, if, if someone asks, I just think that's something we should strongly consider. Yes, the town doesn't administer the program, but we let them use the town facility to administer the program. So we're a partner with them. So.
Right.
It's another way to extend the partnership.
Right. I would just work that with the Meals on Wheels and not go and do something on our own.
Yeah. Because I know they have touched on how important it is to. Yeah, because I know they have touched on how important it is to continue that program.
Well, I was going that way, I guess, yeah.
I was just, a thought here, since we, they did have a delivery program, those people in that situation, you would think they could make contact and be added on to the delivery program, which is already in force. And if it's six or eight or whatever it is, that system's already in place, they just need to put their name on the list. And that way, the town wouldn't have to deliver, be tied with that.
Yeah, I think we'll work with them. I'm sure they already put that in place, but there might be a shortfall of volunteers, so we'll work with them wherever they have a shortfall and see if there's a way we can, we could fit into that.
Good point.
Okay, I thought, I had a question for our town attorney, but I think I'll just hold that for right now. We're still in what I consider to be the phase of questioning or asking questions to the town manager based on his presentation and the other town managers. Ms. Singleton, you had the follow-up there, Mr. Matthews. Then I'm gonna go back down here to see if there are other questions on that presentation, then we'll sort of get into the phase. So Ms. Behringer.
I do have one more question. I had a citizen contact me and ask for clarification about the two-week ban on meetings of 100 people or more. Does that end in two weeks when the two-week school thing stops, or does it go through that Saturday or Sunday? Do we know?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, but my understanding was it was a 30-day.
It lasts until the, it's 30 days.
30 days, until rescinded or superseded.
Which is, would be April 13.
Okay, we make sure it's clear, so the schools are gonna be closed for two weeks, but the mass, the 100 people or more ban is 30 days?
Yes, until April 13.
And I'm sure they will reevaluate that.
That includes churches? That includes church meetings?
Yes, the ban, the 100 or more ban includes anything.
Okay, I just wanted clarification. I did not understand that the directive was for 30 days, but this is good, okay.
So that might be a good time. I'm gonna take mayor's prerogative here to ask Mr. Baggett, because we will, we will get to this, I'm sure. In discussions about the town's setting policy and limitations, do we have statutory authority to make more restrictive measures than is mandated by the governor's direction? I didn't say that quite right.
As to your internal facilities and programs and events, certainly. You can shut down your facilities, you can cancel whatever events, programs you want to. In terms of a mandatory set of regulations on gatherings or businesses, if you have such authority, it would be after the declaration of a state of emergency by the town. Please try to follow me closely. I'm talking off the top of my head, but I believe this to be true. If you declare a state of emergency in the town, that doesn't give you complete authority to control what goes on in the town. It gives you authority, it's designed for natural disasters, curfews, sale of alcohol, transportation routes to be used, things like that, rather than gatherings. Now, it could be that you could find, by interpretation, the ability to control events and gatherings that are not town-related under a declaration of emergency. I think it's, off the top of my head, it would be questionable, but possible. In addition, I think you would have to demonstrate that the situation within the town of Garner is different from that of the rest of the state, which is the basis of the governor's That's my initial response. I think it's a tenuous thought to impose higher restrictions on private activities within the town of Garner beyond the state declaration, barring some demonstrable threat within the town of Garner that is very different from the state. And even then, under a declaration of emergency, it's not the kind of thing, those kind of restrictions, that's envisioned by a declaration of emergency. Even then, it would be questionable. But as to our own events, town events, town facilities, town staff, activities, certainly, anything you want to do.
Okay, I think the mayor put it in, and maybe went out of turn, but let's see, it was with Gray, and you, I'm back to Mr. Vance, I believe.
Not this moment.
Not right now, I'm sure we're gonna get into some more things.
Okay, all right, all right. And Mr. Dellinger.
Just a quick question on the communication lines between the town and the county with regards to help facilities in Garner, so we have urgent care. How are we giving notice about their capacity or use? I was put on notice that Garner Wake Med Urgent Care is closed today. It was posted on their Facebook and on their Twitter. Are we made aware when that happens? Do we get a reason why it's happened? They're supposed to be open 24 hours a day, I mean, eight to eight, seven days a week. So I don't know if we are made aware of that preemptively and ahead of time, or if we have any information around facilities within the town.
I have not received notification about that. I'm not sure, I'm sure, maybe EMS or others, maybe, but I don't know anything about that.
If we could follow up with the county or Wake Med and try to get some clarification on to why that facility was closed today, that would be helpful.
And which, which one in particular was, a Garner Wake Med?
The urgent care.
The urgent care, not the hospital, not the emergency.
The urgent care, the urgent care, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we could get just why, that's all.
Are we talking about the Wake Med Hospital on Highway 70 out here?
No. It says urgent care.
It just says urgent care. Those are independent, anyway.
Excuse me?
They're private.
Yeah, where Next Care used to be down by Domino's, Carolina Barbecue, so, yeah, that's closed. That facility just opened recently, but yes, we don't, I don't get any information about that.
Okay, Mr. Manager, while we've gone through questioning, is anything else coming up? Prompt about any other items? We're gonna, we're gonna give one more opportunity.
Um, not right now. I think there'll be some other discussion as we go.
All right, all right. Ms. Behringer, are you okay? Do you have anything else?
I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Singleton, back to you.
A couple of questions, just ties into solid waste. I think Mr. Vance touched on, we know things may get delayed, pushed back. I know public works will start working on a solid, the spring and prepared trash pickup, I believe this week they start. So we do realize if they had something happen, that that may get pushed back and delayed. So I think we all need to recognize that, let citizens know that if they have members that have had to be quarantined, or employee staff that have been quarantined, that unprepared trash may sit out there for weeks. And we, that's just one of those things. We all need to realize that, since my complaints, that's why, because public works may have the situation.
Yeah, I mean, we have no indication at this point that something like that would be necessary, but certainly if it's always possible that it could evolve to interrupt service in that way.
Okay. Now, next question regarding, this goes to solid waste, my contractor, All-Star, I say they have something happen, and their employees, and they, one of them gets, so they quarantined their whole group, and that's two weeks. What's our backup plan to pick up solid waste?
It's, I mean, we have staff that possibly could help, but we, since we have gotten out of that business, we do not have, you know, trucks. We, I mean, that's an equipment-heavy type of operation. I know Forest has been in contact with All-Star. I don't know that, I can say that we have not reached some sort of agreement wherein, you know, we could take over their equipment. There's all sorts of issues about how that would, that would work. So I don't know if we could stand in in that way. I can tell you that we do not have the equipment to service those routes with town assets.
I realize that, and also realize if, if something does happen, but if it does happen, we realize that recycling and solid, and yard waste can wait, but with trash and people using all that toilet paper and paper towels is mad, use it in mine, there's a lot more trash. And now, just a concern is if people had, you know, solid waste sitting out there in a container with bags sitting on top of bags, that's, I just want to make sure that we're addressed it. And in case something happens, the worst of the worst happens, we do have some type of plan that if the town has to interseat and step in, we can try to do something. But you're right, I know we don't have the equipment. We have the equipment just to pick up what we're picking up with unprepared trash waste, with old truck. That's what we do in the dump trucks that we use, the equipment we use.
Yes.
Not to pick up the trash.
Yes.
Okay, just to make sure that that's out there, because that's one of those things that the public will ask, or if we find out, they've had to shut down for a while, what's the plan?
If there's some extreme situation, we could suspend the spring cleaning and maybe, maybe help with any emergency sanitation issue, but we will look at that on a case-by-case basis.
Good, all right. Just asking, just thinking, you know, what people want, they turn the faucet on, they want the water to come out, they flush the toilet, they want it to go away, and they play on 911, they want police, fire, rescue, they want the roads not to have potholes, and they want the trash, when they take it to the street, to disappear. So just want to make sure we got those things in line. We don't worry about streets with this right now. All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton. So there's still a lot of questions, none for you, okay? I think we went this.
Just a clarification, and I think the chief, please, did a good job on that. And in regards to churches, and I think, again, we'll go back to common sense, it's not a unique word to the world, it's called common sense. You use your common sense, don't do dumb things, and you know what you can and cannot do. And we've, and it's always good to look at extenuating or conditioning, a lot of things Mr. Singleton just brought up was very good points, that, you know, we, in worst-case scenarios. But right now, being where we're at and the gathering, my biggest concern was, I know we're talking about First Amendment rights, churches, and they've got a right, most churches are going online, are doing various things. The church I ten, member of, out on Highway 70, that's what they've done, is online. But, again, separation of church and state, my concern was, and I think we've covered it, we're just handing out a brochure suggestion, but that our police can't just pull up in a church and say, you guys can't have church today.
Well, Councilmember Matthews, with the directive given by the governor, I mean, it's more than just a guideline at this point, it's a directive, which I guess makes it kind of a temporary law. Under that guideline that, or directive that was issued yesterday, police have police power to intervene on any gathering that does, is not consistent with the directive the governor gave. So in this case, and at this time, they are allowed to go in and cause that gathering to be broken up. And anyone that doesn't would not be in compliance with that directive, and police will use whatever procedures they have for handling that situation. But, yeah, it, it's not just a guidance right now, it's a, it's a directive that is enforceable right now by all local law enforcement.
What about in Forest County?
Well, the county, the sheriff department, all law enforcement in the whole state should be operating under the same procedures and directive and be using their policing powers to break up anything that is not consistent with the governor's directive.
I hear what you're saying, but.
I think we're gonna be delicate, the best we can on how we handle that, but, but from what we've seen, pretty much all of the churches in our area in Garner have canceled services, some for this week, some for multiple weeks. So we don't think we're gonna have an issue there, but it's, I would just say it's more than just a guidance. It's, it's, it's pretty much, it's pretty much martial law right now, I guess you could say.
But the church I drove by coming in this morning, when I won't even say where it said at this point, but they were having church, because one of my neighbors goes there, and he said, you know, we're gonna have church, he said, the numbers could vary. But having a law enforcement authority go in any church and say, you're gonna have to break up, you cannot have church, we're walking on a thin line. Hope that they use common sense, the churchgoers will. But we are, we're walking a thin line there.
And it's definitely not something we want to do, and I would just caution too, that we not just, just talk about churches, it's any, any gathering. So, yeah, I know churches are more susceptible, especially today, to have large gatherings, but it's, it's any gathering, so we don't want to just be singling out churches, so we're just.
And I think it's great, we can drop, and give them a brochure, say, here's the governor's, da-da-da-da, and we appreciate everybody being in compliance to it. But in the event that church was having service this morning, coming in here, I'm thinking, well, what you gonna do now?
It's the 100 people, Phil.
I understand, I understand it, I understand.
If they, if they drove by Pool Drive, and in front of the Cimmentine Club, there were 100 people gathered, they have the right to say, you have to be under 100 people, here's the law, it's the law.
The governor's the commander in chief of all law enforcement in the state of North Carolina, so if there's a directive signed, sealed by the governor, we have no choice but to enforce it, regardless of the situation.
I thoroughly understand what you're saying, I really do. The law's the law. But, but, I'm just saying, but we are walking a fine line far as religious is concerned, and I'll leave that alone as it may be, and hopefully, common sense will prevail, and they'll keep them under 99 people. So our police will have to go in and count everybody in the church, to make sure they're under 90, and it might seem far-fetched, but, you know, constitutional rights and freedoms are sacred, and, and I don't take them lightly, I don't think nobody else up here does either. And, but freedom of religion, that's a close, personal thing with me, but I hear what you guys are saying, and I understand it, I understand the law, I'm not arguing with them, just saying there's a little fine line somewhere in there that we've got to be conscious of, and I'll put that down and won't bring it up no more. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I was just saying, I think in Garner, I can't speak further. We have, we have a good relationship with our faith-based organizations here and have been involved with a lot of them on special events and different things, so I think we could work and collaborate on how we would handle that.
I think so.
But we do have to enforce.
Yeah, I mean, I have the governor's order here, it is pretty explicit, and it cites statutes, and I'm sure Mr. Baggett could, could confirm, yeah, but it does say, pursue it to NC General Statute 6166A, 19.30A2, the provision of this section shall be enforced by state and local law enforcement officers, and it refers back to his decree about mass gatherings. Any event or convening that brings together more than 100 persons in a single room or single space at the same time, such as in an auditorium, stadium, arena, large conference room, meeting hall, theater, or any other confined indoor/outdoor spaces, includes parades, feasts, and festivals, and so forth. But at any rate, the general statutes that are cited in the governor's order does, does require enforcement by state and local officials, so. I, I don't, I hope and don't believe it'll come to that, I have a lot of, I don't mean to use the fun here, I have a lot of faith in the faith community that, as they know about this, that they will, they will certainly.
And common sense will prevail.
If I may just clarify one more time, the schools are closed for two weeks. That may change, but, now they're closed for two weeks, but this directive on the mass gatherings is for 30 days?
Yes.
That means rebetween the lines?
From yesterday.
They'll extend the schools?
Oh, sure, but I did, just did not hear the 30 days earlier.
Yeah, okay, all right.
On that, most, all the school systems out the state, the public school systems, their spring break is incorporated in all this, so they would miss at least, they would miss three weeks if it goes 30 days, and that's, but just by a fluke of timing. But most of them would have their spring break incorporated in all this also, so.
Prop schools, same way.
Yeah, at least three, three weeks of school, but, so, it is what it is.
Okay, still sort of emphasizing the questioning part, and then I keep saying we're gonna go to a different phase that I'll define in a minute, I guess. So, Mr. Vance, I believe, I'm back around to you.
I have no questions.
Questions, okay, we've covered down here. Mr. Dellinger?
Questions?
Questions?
No.
Okay. Probably wait in if they needed to, do we need to?
Yeah, sir, if there's anything I missed, feel free to elaborate, but I think, I think we're good, we're just.
Okay.
Wait for council direction.
All right. At this point, I'm going to ask council to offer up any comments regarding what you've heard and thoughts about the effectiveness of that, and if you have comments about other areas that you think the town and the town staff need to explore, I think that would be a proper time to do that, and/or to perhaps engage in question and answers among council members themselves if need be. So I'll just, you have a question?
I'll just lead off, Mr. Mayor. I think our staff is doing an excellent job, I think our emergency services are on top of it, and I don't know anything we're being communicated to through our town manager and being alerted to everything, and we always got the opportunity to sit down as a group like this, if you call it. And just speaking for me, I think we're. uh, just speaking for me, I think we're, uh, as we look worldwide and statewide and countywide, we're doing a, a very effective job on this situation, and I personally think we just need to let it move forward, and under the, uh, your and the town manager's guidance, and, and let's try to ride this thing out, and make good decisions whenever possible, and just leave it, leave it as is, as we're handling it right now.
I'm just going to go down the line this time, and so, Mr. Singleton?
I have a question, but I just want to point this interesting headline out, I, I, God, no, some dag of news people didn't headlines are just as dumb as the fence post. This is on a CNN insight. Infectious people without symptoms might be driving the spread of coronavirus more than we realize, they might be spreading influenza, strep throat, this, that, and the other, duh! How stupid can people be sometimes? I mean, people without symptoms might be driving the spread of any disease or illness, folks, God bless America, I swear.
What source was that, please?
This is on the news website, it happens to be a CNN headline.
CNN, okay.
I'm just reading, I'm just reading the headline, writing the story, come on, folks, good God.
Okay.
A question I'll bring up, and, and this is probably getting the horse way before the cart, but the legislature would have to act on this, because there's been talk about pushing Tax Day deadline from April fifteenth to another date, so, there may be a consideration, I don't know if y'all have heard anything yet, probably not, but the General Assembly may extend the, the budget deadline from June thirtieth, I don't know, they move their deadline all the time, but I don't know if that's even been mentioned yet, because if, if local governments have to shut down for two weeks or four weeks anywhere across the state, then that, you lose valuable time, not only working on the budget, but you're spending all your time working on this, you can't work on the budget, so, we understand that, and I think that may be something to find out and ask, if the legislature's even considering that, extending it to certain, you know, thirty days or something, I wouldn't be surprised to see that, have consideration, it may or may not happen, but, again, as, as the town's Garner size, or bigger than Garner, or smaller than Garner, has to attend to this, employees are dealing with other things other than budgets, even though you've got budget deadlines, so, I'll just throw that out there, that's it for now.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton, Ms. Behringer.
Uh, well, I would reiterate what's already been said about appreciating staff's diligence and thoroughness in answering our questions, and, um, in covering as, as much as can be covered, uh, this whole issue is a moving target, it's, as they say on the news every day, it's changing daily, and so, we're going to have to change some of what we are doing or expecting or anticipating daily as well. Um, I would also like to just remind everyone that this kind of thing has happened before, it is not, not good, not easy, nobody wanted it, uh, but we have survived it before, and we will survive this one, if everybody maintains their sense of priorities and respect for the work that's being done to keep them safe, and we'll honor and follow those, uh, those guidelines.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Behringer, Mr. Vance.
Uh, I can only repeat what has been said, uh, continue, continue with the due diligence that you are with the staff, and to the, to the town manager, and also to, uh, the EMS and our police, we definitely appreciate the efforts that you're putting forth, I received a call from my deacon of my church, and he said he was hiding because the police just drove by, uh, he was the only person there, but I, I say, "Yeah, you stay put," but, uh, yeah, so that's a joke. And, uh, we definitely appreciate all the work that is being done, and, uh, just keeping us abreast, and I would just say, let us not panic, and let, uh, let us as leaders not panic anyone else, just as this article that was read by Councilman Singleton was one that was, uh, it was out there. So, I just ask that we be responsible when it comes to looking at what's transpiring, and be responsible, and when it comes to the information that's being provided, and getting it out in a, in a manner that it doesn't make the situation worse. But thank you again for all your hard work.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance, and, Mr. Dellinger.
Uh, reiterate what my council members have said, uh, appreciation for all the hard work of staff, it's just such a fluid situation, and, um, police and fire and everybody, because it, it is just changing so quickly, so, um, we appreciate how well you're staying on top of what's happening. Um, speaking on things changing quickly, with Wake County closing schools fairly abruptly, um, and in the governor's declaration, him creating an education and nutrition working group, there are food issues, but, kind of tangential to that is, uh, what I'm seeing online, and this is sort of a function of Garner being the community that we are, where people want to help their neighbors, what I see as a potential problem is the danger of community-led assistance, where people are, I've already seen online, people offering to go do things for people, and to help out, and pick up groceries, or share food, and, and, again, I know all of this stuff is happening so quickly, but I, I think there's a danger there where people may be accidentally transmitting, uh, and contaminating unknowingly, um, and so, I think it might be wise if we were to talk with the county, um, some other health professionals, and figure out how to, how to inform some of these people, how to the best practices, and not just to go, if you're taking something to a senior, that you're not going into their home, and touching their hand, touching them, or, um, it, it's, it's kind of a function of us just being so helpful, um, and I don't know what kind of leadership we as a town can provide with regards to keeping everyone safe and informed, as to what the, the danger points are for, um, transmission, it kind of goes back to this, um, the, there's a little, there's a significant difference with this particular virus with regards to whom it affects and how. And I have brought some information I'll share with council, uh, the, the mortality rate for people over sixty-five is absolutely and significantly higher than every other demographic. There is concern emerging, scientific concern, so, we can laugh at the headline, but because the resilience of younger people, they, there may be a situation where they appear to maybe only have a cold, they may show, they are also more likely to show no symptoms at all. And what that creates is a situation where, when you have younger people congregating, interacting with older people, they may be accidentally infecting them. And while all the data isn't there, I think we need to look at the data that is available, and as we provide guidance, um, try to limit and suggest limiting interactions between older and younger people, we can't mandate that, we can't, there are a lot of things we can't do, um, but I think, as, again, everything's a moving target, I think in moving forward, as we provide guidance in our own programming in the town, as we provide guidance to nonprofits that want to do work in the town, I think it would help if we provided some type of guidance for them on that. Um, with regards to schools, again, the abrupt closure, I think Mr. Singleton is, is, is correct, that it's two weeks now, I've heard from friends in other states that they're planning for eight weeks, even though they've only announced two or three themselves, and, um, I guess as the town manager, again, everything moving so quickly with the governor's declaration on Saturday, there is also significant concern within the community with regards to, uh, kids being able to get food, um, daycare is, childcare is another separate issue, but what communications have we had to, as of today, again, one day after he made the declaration, from the, the county school system about, I know Mecklenburg County had talked about before they closed down, they were going to stay open until Thursday, and then they would have this, keep the schools open so that people could come to get food, what information have we gotten to date about the, the school system's assistance with that element of the shutdown?
I haven't received any, I'm not sure if any other staff has, that hasn't been passed on to me, but...
Okay.
I know it's something that is concerned, because, I mean, I've heard about it on the news, also, about school nutrition and those type of things, but, um, I haven't received anything.
Okay.
Mr. Dixon, if I could add, I do understand, um, from working on this from a personal standpoint with Backpack Buddies, that I happen to be involved with in town, that we're waiting some guidance from the county, and I understand that the county's meeting currently now...
Excellent.
...to be able to get some more guidance out, and then, I know at least our group that services all the elementary schools in the Garner area are awaiting that guidance to figure out how we might can dovetail our traditional Backpack Buddies program with whatever Wake County's doing, and I understand that a few other service agencies that help supplement that are also making plans, but we're all sort of having to base that around the, whatever guidance Wake County ultimately gives out, in terms of having some spots for grab-and-go, meals is one, one possibility I've heard, so, we're, we're waiting that to figure out how we can plug some existing support networks into Wake County's situation.
I'm going to just interject quickly, and you can continue just a minute, uh, you know, Backpack Buddies is one, uh, my wife happens to be involved with it, and I know a lot of retired teachers are involved with that program, ju- just another illustration of how this town and, and community really, um, comes together to do a lot of volunteer efforts that a lot of people don't know about, but that is a program that is, I've forgotten how many years it's been in place, John, but, um, a, a number, and...
This one's been a dozen.
Yes, and, and, and not only retired people but, uh, are involved, but, uh, several civic clubs, uh, furnished, uh, much of the funding for that, I know John's a club that he's in, I think, uh, they do major fundraisers to help that, so, I just want to put in a plug for, for that program in particular, and some others, and it may be that some of those programs already have some ideas about some, some ways they're going to be able to provide additional assistance.
That's good to hear, because I know there's a lot of concern.
Okay, if you wrap up fairly soon, but you go ahead.
I will.
Okay.
Um, and also, if we could communicate with them to make sure, John, since you've had some, I guess, feedback with them on, that their sanitary practices included, again, it's a very different situation, it's getting a bunch of people together, um, again, just decrease, uh, the transmission probability. And just the other question, I guess it probably would stand until council meeting, or two, uh, and again, probably too early, are you seeing any impacts on reallocations of budget with regards to efforts that we're undertaking, or is it just too soon?
It's too soon right now, um, um, I'm trying to think of anything that might be critical, that would have a budget impact, I can't think of anything, Matt.
Um, one thing that we have talked about is, um, is some of our technology needs, and, um, we, we might need some additional hardware, you know, some of our limitations to how many people can connect to the network remotely are hardware-based, some of them have to do with subscriptions to software, those kind of things, so we are looking into what it would take to expand that, um, it's, it's not necessarily as easy as just snapping your, your fingers, so, um, there would be some time and some cost that goes into that, but that's, I, that's one area, not necessarily huge expenses, but that's, that's one area where I think we may see some, um, unexpected costs.
Uh, two more things, real quick.
Okay.
Um, one, I think it'd be helpful, too, for council, um, is to maybe get a, every day, sort of a very, very brief update on any changes in guidance from the CDC, or the state, or the county, just in an email like this is...
Yeah, we have...
As the declarations roll out, um, just so it's regularly coming out, and we know...
Yeah, we've talked about some things internally, so, one of the plans is to, um, one of the things we talked about is giving the council a daily update on, not just that, but Garner operations, and kind of let you know where we are, and any changes, and just kind of let you know what the situation looks like.
That would be great. Uh, last thing is, um, had, there are a lot of, uh, small businesses in Garner that are going to be, and business owners that are going to be disproportionately affected by this, and will require some, um, everybody wants to help, but sometimes the best way to help, in normal circumstances, would be, the best way would be to patronize those businesses, um, this is a situation where it may not be wise to do that, um, and I had some conversations with some folks about, uh, maybe setting up a business resiliency fund, that, uh, no specific workflow, but I'd like to talk with John about that, um, and I've had one conversation with the chamber about trying to figure out some way to get some funds together, so that these small businesses, you know, every little bit will help with a small business, um, just to come up maybe with an outline of a program, um, that the town can either participate in, in some way, or, or facilitate, um, because people are really going to, um, be hurt in the long, a little bit, every little bit will help, and so, um, I'd like, you know, I guess council's permission or something to sort of talk with staff about figuring out maybe a potential opportunity there for us to do something. Nothing concrete at this time, but, that's all.
Um, so, I want to confirm with council something that I think I know the answer to, uh, I think all of you here know that at this point, uh, we have no plans to disrupt any of the scheduled meetings, including the one that's coming up next Tuesday, um, I guess an element of that, that, uh, we need to, um, perhaps make a decision on, if we continue to have our meeting, regular meetings, and should we have, uh, an outpouring of the public coming to those meetings that, uh, would be considered a mass gathering, uh, I guess we'd have to take some action to limit, obviously, the number of folks, I don't think that'll be a problem, but, uh, something, uh, we need to think about. But first of all, to the council, um, does anybody here have any reason to, um, think or believe that, uh, that we should not carry on with, uh, with the regular meetings that have been scheduled? I think you've all been polled, and I don't think I've heard from anybody, obviously, that could change based on circumstances and updates and those kinds of things, so, uh, that means our next scheduled meeting next Tuesday, uh, there's a follow-on to that with, uh, what is it, lines of service, and then a retreat, and those things that are all out there in front of us, so, uh, we'll keep you apprised if anything changes to, uh, suggest that, uh, we should postpone a council some of those. Um, at this point, I'm going to see if, uh, if the town attorney has any, uh, other, uh, advice or comments, or...
Thank you, Mayor, I really don't, uh, y'all have covered the waterfront, legally as well as operationally, uh, we all understand as best we can, the governor's declaration, some questions arose overnight among lawyers like me, but they were responded to by the, uh, Secretary of Public Safety and his staff, uh, funerals and so forth and so on, uh, so, no, I, I don't have any additional comments at this time.
Okay, and I'd like to, again, personally thank, uh, Mr. Baggett, who was, uh, who was taking calls late last evening, uh, could have fussed at me for calling him and so forth, but he was very accommodating, uh, to answer questions and to give some guidance in relation to this meeting today, and to, uh, come over on a Sunday, um, for, 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 for some who weren't attending worship services, it's probably been a good morning to play golf, but at any rate, uh, we appreciate you being here, as always.
Glad to do it.
Um, so, council, um, unless there are other issues to come before this body, uh, just before we adjourn, I want to share a couple of things, and then, uh, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn, but go ahead.
Uh, one very, very brief, uh, statement that I, and my notes are all over the place, so, um, but one is, and again, not something we can address right now, but with all the cancellations of programs and services, um, there's also concern, again, not something we can address right now, but something we need to keep in mind, is the impact of, uh, the isolation of, of seniors over the next few weeks and months, and, um, keeping that on our radar as partners reach out to us, um, with regards to how we can engage them, uh, it, there's a lot of social activities that our seniors are accustomed to having that are no longer going to be there, um, and there will need to be some effort over the next weeks to, uh, make sure that they are not, uh, isolated, um, again, I think everybody knows they need food and these things, but, uh, social interactions and check-ins, but, I just wanted to put that on the, the radar for us to...
Okay, and I might just add, that, that's one of the wonderful, uh, shall I say, side benefits of the Meal on Wheels program, uh, not only are you delivering a meal to a person, but oftentimes you are, uh, you're, you're engaging them in conversation, they always want to talk to you some, and of course, you can only spend so much time because you have to get to the next wheel delivery, but I'm sure Mr. Singleton testifies I have, that, uh, that is certainly one of the ways that, um, even during these dire times, and on a regular basis, uh, it's helpful that some of these folks aren't, aren't so isolated that they don't have at least that one contact a day, and many times others, anything you want to say.
Procedure will follow, Matt mentioned the fact that the staff might need funds, fund for some IT stuff, does the manager already have the authority, do we need to go ahead and grant it so you can do it, and then we can adopt a formal budget amendment later, that you can go ahead and execute a change, so you can do it, and don't have to wait for a meeting?
I, I think for the level of expenditures we're talking about now, we, we have unspent budget remaining in the current fiscal year, it's just that it likely would have been spent on other things instead, but I think we can move forward with the reprioritization of that without you all taking any action, just the understanding that we may have to come back to you later to clean up some things.
Budget amendment, but you can go ahead, and you don't have to wait on, on a regular meeting for y'all to move forward, I just want to make sure we don't want to, we don't want to be the cause of, of, uh, any of that, so, that's good.
And Mayor Marshallburn, if I, if I may, I just wanted to say, um, thank the council for all their support, um, staff continue to have discussions, and we're still continue to brainstorm things we can do internally and, um, community-focused, so, there may be some things we'll bring back to you in the near future, um, that we think will be of benefit, not only to our staff, but hopefully to the community, and, um, as this evolves, we'll, we'll keep evolving with it, so...
Just another observation of the people sitting around this table, at least the elected leaders, I think, um, uh, Mr., uh, our town manager certainly has to deal with the issue of the school closing, he has a child that's in school... school closing, he has a child that's in school. I believe these two gentlemen here are both in that same category, so as they help guide our town, they have personal issues that they're trying to, to work through that are not easy, so we wanna give as much support and encouragement to them as possible. And of course, Mr. Singleton on this day, that's a guest, I believe he's the only one that has a child in school at this time, is that right?
My kids are older than their kids, so it's a little different situation.
Yeah, it is, it is, it is. Before I ask for a motion, or is there anything else, before I make a final comment, I think this was all the items, I mean, this, I think we've stuck very well to the purpose of the meeting. Mr. Baggett probably would have reprimanded us if we had not, so he hasn't done that yet, so.
I think it's good that we had the meeting, people want to hear what the town's doing, people want to know, you know, about emergency services, police, fire, rescue, EMS, they want to know that they're out there, they want to know that if something happens to one of them, or their group, they got a backup plan.
Yeah.
They want to hear that, and, you know, this panic which has set in like over toilet paper, and supposedly it's because if you're gonna be quarantined for two or three weeks, you gotta make sure you have enough of you and your family. That's what they say online. As reasonable or unreasonable as that may sound, that's what the talk is, so, but anyway, the panic, you know, that has set in, and some of it driven by news organizations or whoever, but I appreciate y'all getting together and meeting today and bringing these items up, because it's important for people to know that, you know, there are plans in place, town-wide, county-wide, statewide, that we're hopefully gonna, we'll, we'll continue to follow, and hopefully it'll be a situation where, you know, in a few weeks or months, all this will have subsided, and we'll move forward, but anyway, appreciate everyone getting together, trying to reassure the public, because that's what they want, reassurance, because the panic which has set in on some folks, and their, their concern, and so reassuring them, I think certainly is, is a help.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton, and I know we're thinking, trying to thank a lot of people, but as I look across the audience out there, I want to thank those town staff who came in today, Joe, and you have Mike out there with you, and you guys were out late last night, well, I know you have a shift that's late, I call it late, but the nice young policeman who came to my house to pick up this directive for this meeting today, and then delivering those, you were very helpful in making this meeting possible, so thank you. I see Tony out there, and also Jeff, important department directors for the good work you do. I start to see you may not have had to be here today, but maybe you did, I don't know, but at any rate, we thank you for being here. So, I wish I'd have said these words, but the famous Winston Churchill had many wise sayings in the minds of a lot of people, here's one of those. He says, "Success is the ability to go from one failure to another with no loss of enthusiasm." And what that sort of means to me is the, sort of the evolving state of information as it comes about, you think you've got this nailed down, and then something new comes out, and I certainly don't sense any loss of enthusiasm amongst this group here. The desire is to continue working and, and, and being those leaders of our town and reassuring them. And one final one here is maybe apropos to our situation. Mr. Churchill says, "Every day you may make progress, every step may be fruitful, yet there will be stretch out before you are, before you, there will stretch out before you an ever-lengthening, ever-ascending, ever-improving path. You know you will never get to the end of the journey, but this, so far from discouraging, only adds to the joy and the glory of the climb." So, someone else more famous perhaps than him said this too will pass, I believe that literally, figuratively. So with that, again, thank you, thank for those in the public who listened in today, we're always working to, to gain your trust and to maintain your trust, so we thank you very much. Having said that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Is there a second? Any discussion? Thank you, council members, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, and it is so ordered, and we will see you on the 17th at our regular time. Thank you all.
Thank you.[1771.26]